Okay. Good evening, welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of April 26, 2022. This meeting is called to order. We are not going to call a roll call, I understand. Councilmember Melner is in the lobby just out front, so if he doesn't come in, then we'll take, anyway. So with that, next two items on our agenda, the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Today's invocation is going to be delivered by a good friend of mine, Pastor Will Getz of the Calvary Church right here in Glendale. Pastor, will you come up front? Gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if it's appropriate, please remove it. And if everyone would please stand for our invocation, if you're able, and then please remain standing, if you're able, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Dear God, we come before you tonight in gratitude. Thank you for giving us this opportunity, the ability to govern ourselves as free people, and we want to acknowledge our shortcomings and weaknesses and ask for your insight, your wisdom, your directions on decisions being made tonight on behalf of the citizens of this great city that you have blessed so abundantly. Lord, help us to live in peace with each other, respecting and valuing one another, and looking out for one another as good neighbors. I pray this as a Christian, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. So his last name is Getz, so our standing joke, and he's only heard it probably a million times, is whatever our pastor wants, he gets. Okay. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from April 12, 2022 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the April 12, 2022 voting meeting minutes?
Yes, Mayor, we approve the April 12, 2022 voting meeting minutes.
Second, I have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have it, do have it. That motion carries. Moving on to proclamations. Today, we have a proclamation to recognize April 30, 2022, as Therapy Animal Day in Glendale. We have some special guests with us today for this proclamation reading, representing Gabriel's Angels, who offer pet therapy for children in our community. I'm going to come down to the podium, and I'll have you all come up, and we'll go ahead and read that proclamation. Am I pronouncing it correctly?
Crowsey.
Crowsey. That's the way I was going to say it, but. Who is the current Ms. Glendale? How cool is that? Melissa Steimer?
Yes.
And then she's the CEO of Gabriel's Angels, and Lindsay Swingle and her dog, Jackson, right? Okay. So with that said, we're going to go ahead and read this proclamation. I'm going to present it to you, and then you're welcome, if you need a couple of minutes to kind of say what's going on here, you're welcome to do that, okay? So whereas there are thousands of pet partners, therapy animal teams serving in the communities across the United States, and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30 as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams in the city of Glendale play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through Human-Animal Bond, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students facing literacy challenge, and those approaching the end of life, and whereas those exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now therefore, I, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2022, as Therapy Animal Day, and be it further resolved, I encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and our human handlers. Further, I publicly salute the service of the therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. It was signed by our Chief Clerk and myself. So you get this, right? Or just you get this? You get this?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so.
We'll say a few words, yeah.
Go ahead.
Do you want to say something?
Sure, I'll just introduce myself quick. My name is Maddie Mae Crowsey. I am a second-year medical student at Midwestern University here in Glendale, and I miss Glendale 2022. My social impact, so the service work that I do during my year is called Healing Pause: The Power of Animal Service Therapy and Assistance. And so I work with a few different amazing groups in the organization, in the community, including Gabriel's Angels, so I'll let her talk about it.
Okay, thank you, Maddie. We are grateful, I'm Melissa Steimer, the CEO of Gabriel's Angels, and we are grateful to have Maddie be so passionate about our cause. We've got Lindsay here and Jackson, who really represent 120 pet therapy teams that are going across the state of Arizona into schools, crisis shelters, homeless shelters. We specifically work with kids who are facing trauma, abuse, neglect, really helping kids improve their confidence and compassion, and I think we can all say that kids right now are hurting and are challenged, and we are thankful to be able to serve them and have a special day dedicated to these amazing animals that do such great work.
Perfect. Why don't we get a picture up there? Okay, you got it. You should talk to the chief. You good?
Yeah.
All right.
Jackson has cards, too.
Very good, thank you. I think I'm supposed to come up here, right? I can stay down here.
You can stay down.
I can stay down here and do this. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies. Ms. Bauer, could you read item number three for us, please?
Approve recommended appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies.
Mr. Turner.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Get my microphone on. Mayor, I move that we make the following appointments. Byron Joyce to the Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission for a term expiring January 31, 2024, and Kathleen Rowe to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission for a term expiring January 31, 2023.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, it sounded like from Councilmember Hugh?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any objections? Okay, so all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Your guys have it, do have it. That is passed. We good, Mr. Bailey? Okay, so with that, Mr. Turner, if you'd go ahead and.
Read the names again.
Read the names again, and then once he reads the names, if the folks on that would come up here, and we'll go ahead and get you sworn in, okay?
Byron Joyce to the Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission, and Kathleen Rowe to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Okay, are you the only one here?
One is a lonely number.
One is a lonely number. Okay, so if you would hold up your right hand, I need you to say aye, then state your name.
Aye, Kathleen Rowe.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Let's give her a big round. Thank you so much. Okay, where'd it go? Lost my pen. Okay. You didn't put your name. Who filled out a card that didn't put their name on it that lives on Linda Avenue?
How's that?
Is that you, sir?
Probably.
Okay, so Officer, would you have him put his name on there for us, please? Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. We'll move on to our consent agenda items four through 16. Items on the consent agenda of routine nature, but they've been previously studied by the City Council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. We have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
Yes, sir, item number eight.
Number eight, and that was, item number eight is from Mark Whitmer on item number eight. He does wish to speak on that, he is in support. I think what I'm going to do is, we'll just do this a little different. Mark, I'll have you come up right now if you wish to speak. Where are you at? If you need to speak, you can come on up and speak, if not, then.
If I don't need to, then I'm okay.
Okay, sir, we're going to go ahead and waive you off, but he is in support, and that's item number eight, Mark Whitmer. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items four through 16?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt agenda, consent agenda items four through 16.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Clark, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the consent agenda items four through 16. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have it, do have it, and so that is done. Consent resolutions, we'll now move on to that. Ms. Bauer, could you read consent resolutions, item 17 through 23 by number and title, please?
Item 17, resolution number R22-35, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding between the Glendale Police Department and the Arizona National Guard Counter Drug Task Force for continued joint participation in drug law enforcement operations in the state of Arizona. Item 18, resolution number R22-36, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding between the Glendale Police Department and the Maricopa County Adult Probation Department for data exchange. Item 19, resolution number R22-37, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, IGA 22-0008491-I, for the installation of a pedestrian hybrid beacon located at 67th Avenue, Montebello Avenue within the city of Glendale. Item 20, resolution number R22-38, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number One of the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, IGA 21-0008117-I, for the installation of detection systems along 59th Avenue at 25 intersections in the city of Glendale. Item 21, resolution number R22-39, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona, IGA 22-0008550-I, to provide flashing yellow arrows and positive left turn offsets at six intersections within the city of Glendale. Item 22, resolution number R22-40, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, IGA 21-0008115-I, for the installation of smart detection systems at approximately 20 locations along Glendale Avenue. Item 23, resolution number R22-41, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the annual action plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023, to the U.S. Department of Housing, Housing and Urban Development, and for accepting a community development block grant in the estimated amount of $2,459,350, a home investment partnership program allocation in the estimated amount of $686,496, and an emergency solutions grant funding in the estimated amount of $211,275, and approving and authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2021, 22 substantial annual action plan amendment. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on any of those items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve items 17 through 23 on the consent resolutions agenda?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve consent resolution items number 17 through 23.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from the Vice Mayor, to approve items 17 through 23 on the consent resolutions. I have no speaker cards, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have it, do have it. That motion also carries bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 24?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Johnson Controls Inc. for HVAC service and repairs. No speaker cards.
Okay, do we have a presentation? No? Okay. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 24?
Yes, Mayor, I move approve item 24, linking agreement with Johnson Control.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hughes, second, Councilmember Tomachoff, for the recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I have no speaker cards.
No, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Yes, Mayor, as is my practice, I will be voting no on this item, as it is a five-year contract, and so my vote is nay.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Aye.
Let's back up. Councilmember Melner, turn your speaker on.
Aye.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Tomachoff votes aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Moving on to land development actions, Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 25?
Ordinance number O22-25, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 10 acres located at the northwest corner of Missouri Avenue and 59th Avenue from C2 General Commercial to R4 Multiple Residence for a Development Plan entitled Sunrise Apartments, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening, Sabbath and Perry, our interim planning manager.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council. This item before you is a little different than some of the typical rezoning cases you've been seeing. What I mean by that is typically, we've been coming before you with a planned area development rezoning request, but before you today, it's a straight rezoning request. Okay, so the subject property is located at the northwest corner of Missouri Avenue and 59th Avenue. The request is to rezone 10 acres from General Commercial to multiple residence to allow for a multifamily development consisting of 120 units comprised within nine buildings. Here's a vicinity map. The subject site is approximately 1.5 miles from City Hall. The general plan designation allows for a medium to high-density residential with a maximum dwelling units per acre at 12. The request to rezone the property is consistent with the general plan land use designation. Here's a zoning map that depicts the current zoning for the general commercial. It is surrounded by to the north and to the west for multifamily, which is consistent with what the applicant is proposing, so this would not be considered spot zoning. Here's an area map, just to give context of the subject site. Once again, to the north and to the west is multifamily development, to the south and to the east is commercial development. From a staff standpoint, the proposal to rezone the property with the intended development is a nice transition for a infield vacant piece of property. The analysis is, once again, as previously stated, that the rezoning request is consistent with the general plan land use designation. There is significant infrastructure in place for what is being proposed for the site. If the site is developed for the multifamily, it will increase the housing supply, which is needed, and also it will support infield development. The item was heard before Planning Commission, where there were no opposition at the Planning Commission public hearing, and Planning Commission recommended approval with two stipulations, which are outlined within the staff report. Mayor and council, that concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just one out of curiosity. What kind of amenities will be offered with this project?
Mayor, Councilmember McLaughlin, the property owner applicant has not submitted their design review application as of yet, but from a general standpoint, it would consist of a pool, a spa, a clubhouse, a tot lot, a fitness center within the clubhouse.
Okay, thank you. I think that's wonderful. I can remember when that was a storage area for lawn mowers for many years, so to see the, that kind of stuff go away and be replaced by this, I think is a plus for the community. Thank you.
No other questions? Okay, can I get a motion to approve item 25, please?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we pass and adopt ordinance O22-25, including the two stipulations recommended by the Planning Commission, and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? I have no speaker cards on this item. Hearing none, Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, could you introduce, or would you introduce, item 26 for us, please?
Resolution number R22-42, a resolution of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona, by approving a general plan amendment, GPA 21-11, for property located east of the southeast corner of 67th Avenue and Glendale Avenue. Ordinance number O22-26, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 14.6 acres located east of the southeast corner of 67th Avenue and Glendale Avenue from R4 Multiple Residence to PAD Planned Area Development for Development Plan entitled Center Line on Glendale, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Speaker cards?
No, sir.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to approve item 26?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 26, resolution number R22-42.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, second, Councilmember Clark, for the recommended action. We have any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, no speaker cards on this item. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Happily vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries also unanimously. Moving on to ordinances, Ms. Bauer, can you introduce, would you introduce, item 27, ordinance 022-27?
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion on the ordinance that was part of 26?
Yes. Number 27, the number 26, there was a resolution, and then there was an accompanying ordinance, so we need to now take a vote on the ordinance.
Okay, well, that got left out. Okay, so item number 20, is it 27 then?
It would be 26.
Do you need a motion on it?
An ordinance number O22-26.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number O22-26.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second from the Vice Mayor, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Carries unanimous. Okay, now we're moving on to item 27.
Ordinance number O22-27, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 24, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Specific Parking Prohibitions, Section 24-61, Parking in Mobile Homes or Recreational Vehicles, and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Rick St. John, Deputy City Manager.
Mayor, council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 4, or 24, rather, which is our traffic and vehicles chapter of the city code. The amendment was discussed in workshop a couple of weeks ago. Essentially, what we're saying is it's legal to park your motor vehicle or your recreational vehicle on the street in front of your home for a period of up to 24 hours for the purpose of unloading, loading, cleaning, that, those specific reasons that the motorhome would be used for vacation travel or something of that nature. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. St. John? No questions, we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, council, any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion on item 27, ordinance 022-27?
Yes, Mayor, I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 022-27.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second, Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 28, 022-28?
Ordinance number O22-28, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, nuisances, Article 3, Administration and Enforcement, Section 25-24, miscellaneous, and setting forth an effective date.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for council to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 25, specifically Section 25-24, two parts of that section entitled miscellaneous. The first part deals with the use of a private property that creates blighting conditions for a neighborhood specific to the feeding of pigeons on that private property. This was discussed in workshop several weeks ago, and consensus was to bring it to the voting meeting. The second amendment is, so that would be A, the A section, or the A part of Section 25-24, the K part, K's in King part, deals with holiday decorations, and we adopted an ordinance that amended this more than a year ago now, or about a year ago, I'd say, that allowed for people to put holiday decorations up 30 days prior to and 30 days after a specific holiday that's being celebrated. And what we learned through this last holiday season, that 30-day prior was not enough time. So the recommendation to council in a workshop a couple of weeks ago was to extend that to 60 days. So now you can put holiday decorations for Christmas, for example, right around the holiday, or right around the holiday, Halloween season, and you can keep that up into January, which we believe is sufficient, and there was council consensus to bring it to a voting meeting. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, motion on item 28, ordinance 022-28.
Mayor.
Mr. Melner.
I move that we adopt and approve ordinance number O22-28.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second, Councilmember Clark, to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Oh, wait a second, timeout. I did, I'm sorry, I'm going to hold off on your vote. I did have one person that wanted to speak.
Tabling my vote.
Thank you. Warren Wolf, are you here?[1786.12]
This is subject 29. This is 28.
Well, my script is really jacked up here, so I'm showing, okay, that's fine. I didn't miss you, right? Okay, we're good. Okay. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 29, ordinance 022-29?
Ordinance number O-22-29, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code, Chapter 25, nuisances, Article 2, Specific Acts, Omissions and Conditions, Section 25-21, Land Maintenance, and Declaring an Emergency.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 25 again, this time Section 25-21, dealing with land maintenance. The item that we talked about in workshop had to do with grass and weeds in excess of six inches where grass is meant to be grown on the property. So we're not talking about desert landscape. We're talking about when someone has a yard of grass, and they allow that grass to exceed six inches, that would be a specific violation. In a recent amendment of this section, we inadvertently omitted that six inch requirement. We're asking it for, it to be added back in. In workshop, council talked about making sure that the amendment that was adopted, I think it was last June, didn't change, and that had to do with grass and weeds on the sidewalk or curtilage in front of the yard and in desert landscape. And there is no height requirement. If it is a tripping hazard or causes a health and safety concern, it is a, or a blighting concern. It is a violation regardless of the height. The new language makes that very clear. It was run through the legal department and amended through their office, and I'm very comfortable with the language as it is. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Mr. Melner?
Yeah, I just want to get, again, on that point, I want to get some more clarification. So, because you did mention landscaping. So would this apply to, say, for example, you have a landscape yard that has rocks on it, but it's, it's mostly weeds growing through it that are less than six inches tall? Would you, would that be considered a blight? How would, how would that be rated?
Mayor, Councilmember Melner, that would be considered a violation.
That would be a violation regardless of the six inch rule?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, that's why I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, one other question. So if, if there's grass growing up in the sidewalk, the citizen of Glendale is responsible for that grass in the sidewalk?
Mayor, that is correct.
So if it's potentially a tripping hazard, then they could be violated or cited?
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Mr. Wilfong? Invite you to speak. You have three minutes, sir. If you'll just state your name, I don't need to know your address, just the district you live in.
Warren Wilfong, Alcatel District.
Thank you, sir.
I was on the code committee. This is one of the items that we were really kind of like specified in, trying to eliminate this tripping hazard. History has it that anytime there's a conflict of codes or requirements in a code, code has always taken the least amount of one that causes less problems. Adding the code of six inches into this ordinance and still having the, no grass, they're gonna go to the six inch. And if you give me, this might take a little while, and I can give this picture up here. I'll give you an example of what's going on and how code handles things. And actually, I have, you can pass these out too if you can.
If you could straighten that out just a little bit, Mr. Wilfong? He's trying to zoom into that. If you'll straighten that out with the lines, there you go. You can use that as your example.
Okay, as my example. So in the past, this is an example, this was an old, this, I'll use the old code. This was a violation in the old code from 1993 to 2021, and the old code said no parking permitted in the front park, yard of the parking area. So this is a violation of the circle driveway. The front yard contains no more than 50% total square footage of parking driveway or other circulations. So, Tim, I mean, Rick St. John came on board, he's asking, "Tim, why we are not enforcing the 50%, 50% rule?" Tim's response is, "I'm not aware of the cases where we enforce 50% for a circle driveway. It doesn't mean we can't, or we won't. I don't think we've become before. Visually, visually, I don't think this exceeds 50%. But I'd like to take measurements before you respond." Rick St. John's response, "Thanks, perfect." Tim Bowling comes back, attaches the measurements from the county assessor of the driveway. The parking area is a total of the circle driveway adjacent to the yard is 1,000, 1,000, 1,031 feet, and the yard is 2,025,38. 50% is 1,269. So they consider it not a violation. So this happened, and then it never got corrected, because it was a violation back then. So what happens now is we go through two and a half years of code to fix this problem. And if you take a look at the code right here, can you see that one?
It's gonna read sideways. You need to turn it.
Turn to the other way.
I'm not sure if they'll be able to make that in.
So I'll just read it to you. This was in...
I'll need you, I'll need you to speed it up. You're already over your time.
Okay. So this was in September of this year, R-21. I discussed the case with my supervisor, Jim Trammell, and code official, and Tim Bowling, and confirmed that a circle driveway is allowed, and vehicles are allowed to park on it. So clearly, even with the new code that we put in place, they do what they want. So that's the point I'm trying to get. Even though they do, we do, we have the place to prevent this, they are still allowing the code. So when they, when you submit the six inch into the current code, 25-21G, you're making a conflict with the code.
Okay, I do need you to wrap it up.
I'm going to, right now. So what I'm proposing is, if you do 21, 25-21H, it reads like this, "No person owning or, or any vacant building or vacant property within the city will allow their hound grass to grow to exceed six inches." The language is already in the code on the next step down. So if we just add, "No person owning or occupying any property or any vacant building or vacant property within the city," solves your problem without changing the code that's talking about grass sidewalk. So I would like to see council reject this proposal and direct staff to put it in H.
Okay, Mr. Wilfong, your time's up. Thank you. Okay, so with that, you have the opportunity to ask questions. Any questions?
Again, I would, I would just like to get some clarification. Again, again, to repeat what I asked before, to, because I want to address Mr. Wilfong's concern, that basically by adding the six inch rule, it will possibly provide a way that you can interpret and only use the six inch rule. And I'd like our attorney to weigh in on this as well, of what the language says and what it means.
Well, I have it in front of me. It speaks for itself, and in terms of what, and in terms of what the explanation that Mr. St. John provided, is an accurate depiction, which will be enforceable by the city.
Again, if I may, Mayor, so the question that is brought forward was that we want to make sure that it cannot be interpreted, that you have to have six inch tall grass in the sidewalk or in landscape rocks before it becomes a violation. That's, that is the concern, and we want to make sure that legally, that's how we're interpreting it, and we want to go there.
Mayor and council, we have created a code now that, that not only addresses six inches in height, but even if there is, let's say on a sidewalk, if there is overgrowth of weed, which may not be in six inches in height, but it may be of such a case that it's actually, could be a tripping hazard, could be a nuisance, or something like that, we could cite for that as well.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may. Quite simply, the, the way the code reads, as we're attempting to have tonight, kind of breaks it into three separate categories. The first category is any property. So if you own any property in the city, you can't have grass or weeds in excess of six inches. In addition to that, if you own property that has desert landscaping, you can't have blighting conditions. So we've, we've gone from any property, which is very general, to now we're addressing desert landscaped properties. And then the third section talks about curtilage and sidewalk and frontage, and technically, city right away in front of your property. And it says you can't have anything in that area that's a safety hazard. So the, the way the code's written today, as I explained in the initial presentation, if you have a grass front yard and your grass exceeds six inches, that's why we need the height requirement for grass front yards, then it is a violation. If you have desert landscaping, as was questioned by Councilmember Melner, if you have weed, excessive weeds, that's a blighting condition. It doesn't matter how tall the weeds are, it's a blighting condition, and we would enforce. And then if you have something on your sidewalk that's a tripping hazard, as Mr. Bailey said, we can enforce that. So I think the code as it's written tonight at council direction covers it quite nicely.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, so can I get a motion on item 29, ordinance 022-29?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 29.
Second.
Okay, make your motion again.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase that. That's item number 29, ordinance number 022-29. Perfect.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Discussion on the motion, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Clark. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Nay.
I'm gonna explain my vote. I vote nay, and the reason I vote nay is I still, and I've argued this point many times, I think when the city has sidewalks going through your property, I don't think it should be the citizen's responsibility to make sure that there's not a tripping hazard on a sidewalk. I think we're shirking our responsibility by asking our citizens to do it. I don't agree with it, even though this will still pass. That's the issue I have. I do agree on everything else, though, with the uncontrolled weeds and high grass and everything. I just don't believe that we should take a city sidewalk and make the citizens responsible for our duties, so that's why I'm a no vote. With that, it does pass. We'll move on. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item number 30, please?
Ordinance number O-22-30, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of easements and deeds at various locations throughout the city and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Glendale Principal Engineer Jamie Chavon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a request to accept deeds and easements in support of the Springs at Westgate, multifamily development, and the Harbor Park 107, industrial development. Staff is recommending acceptance so that the city may operate and maintain its facilities in the future. Thank you.
Is there a motion on, any questions? Is there a motion on item 30, ordinance 022-30?
Yes, Mayor. I move we adopt ordinance number O-22-30.
Second. Okay, I got a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hugh to approve the recommended action. We have any discussion on this? Any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 31, 022-31, please?
Ordinance number O-22-31, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing cash and appropriation balance transfers between budget items in the adopted fiscal year 2021-2022 budget.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report this evening is Glendale Budget and Finance Director Lisette Camacho.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to approve an ordinance approving fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. Exhibit A contains the requested cash and appropriation transfers between departments and funds. The transfers are consistent with the city's cash and budget appropriation transfer policy, and the city's fiscal year 2022 total budget appropriations across all funds remains unchanged with this action. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I just would like to have a brief explanation of what the process is for deciding where this, where these allocations go when they're re-appropriated.
Mayor, members of the council, for the budget transfers or appropriation transfers, the Budget and Finance Department will look at where there is available appropriation that will not be utilized during the fiscal year, and then we transfer the appropriation only to the funds that need it. For the appropriation transfers, keep in mind that no cash is being moved, and for the budget transfers tonight, only line one, on page one on the exhibit A, is a cash transfer.
Mayor, if I could, so how do you identify the funds that need it, then? How, how does that process work?
Mayor, members of the council, usually what happens is the departments come to Budget and Finance and request an appropriation transfer. So for example, I'll use one in here, for the lines two to five on page two, which is an appropriation transfer for capital improvement carryover. So for that specific example, that one, when we estimated a carryover for the new fiscal year, we did not estimate enough, so additional appropriation was needed for the carryover. In some cases, the departments had expenditures that exceeded their appropriation, so additional appropriation was needed.
Mayor, if I could add something to that. In addition to that, you'll see that some of these transfers are actually cases where we brought something forward to council to discuss an action plan for the future, and council gave consensus for that project or that, well, mainly for that project to take place. And so when we, when we do that in the middle of the year and there's no budget for that project, but if council gives consensus, then we'll come back in the fourth quarter and make the budget transfers. We can only make budget transfers in the fourth quarter, but to get things moving, we often come to the council and ask for their consensus, such as the case for the City Hall project, which is a large part of this transfer. Council gave consensus for us to move forward with the first phases of that project, and we hadn't, we didn't have a budget in place, so we, it required a budget transfer. So I hope that helps clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who can, can I get a motion on item 31, ordinance 022-31?
Mayor, I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 022-31.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. approve the recommended action. Does any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Burr, would you introduce item 32, ordinance 022-32?
Ordinance number O22-32, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the Glendale City Code as it relates to bylaws for city of Glendale boards, commissions, and committees.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you was studied two weeks ago in a council work session. At that time, the council directed me to bring it forward for your consideration for final action, with the notable exception that I was to meet with Councilmember Clark to discuss preferred language with regards to membership in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since that time, I've met with Councilmember Clark. I've also met with Councilmember Tomachoff. And based upon those meetings and the direction of the council, I would ask the council move to approve ordinance O22-32 with the following amendment to 3.102(c), which pertains to the composition of the Planning Commission, which shall read, "Members shall be residents of the city of Glendale or own real property, operate a licensed business of continuous operations in the city of Glendale, and demonstrate civic participation in community activities." I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion on item 32, ordinance 022-32?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
So we can follow along, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the uniform bylaws for boards and commissions. If there is a second to that, then I'll offer the motion to amend the membership on the Planning Commission. So I move that we adopt ordinance O22-32.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor, I further move that we amend section 3.102(c) pertaining to the composition of the Planning Commission, to read, "Members shall be residents of the city of Glendale or own real property, operate a licensed business of continuous operations in the city of Glendale, and demonstrate civic participation in community activities."
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, and Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Also, a motion as an amendment, as read by Councilmember Turner and seconded by Councilmember Clark. Any discussion on those motions? And we're taking one vote, basically, on both. A roll call vote. Councilmember?
I believe the proper order would be to take a vote on the amendment and then to take a vote on the motion, depending on whether or not the amendment is approved.
That's fine. Your first motion is the one we're agreeing with. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Second motion.
Mayor, council. Councilmember Turner has bifurcated this into two motions, so your first vote will be on the amendment and whether or not to include the amendment, and then a second vote will be on the ordinance with an amendment.
Okay, so let me back up. We're doing your second motion to amend with Councilmember Clark's second.
Right.
Aye.
And I would like to have discussion on the motion.
You want discussion on a motion?
Right.
Is there any discussion?
Mayor, so regarding this amendment, the motion to amend, it would allow non-residents to serve on our Planning Commission. And I don't particularly think that that's a good idea. And as this is drafted, it would allow, you know, any number of non-residents to serve on the commission, including a majority or a totality of the commission to be non-residents. And we have 260,000 residents, and assume that one out of four is an adult, that gives us over 60,000 potential people who could be appointed to our boards and commissions. And I think that we ought to be able to find good, qualified residents that have a vested stake in the outcome of our city as members of our boards and commissions, including the Planning Commission. So therefore, I do not support the amendment to the motion.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I could respond?
Please.
I don't believe that Councilmember Turner's concern is that notable. There are any number of people who have businesses in Glendale. I can think of a lot of people who have businesses in downtown Glendale, who are extremely vested in Glendale and who participate regularly in the life of the community. That would fit this criteria. And I think they have just as much of an interest as what happened, to what happens in Glendale, as many other residents who might, who might, may or may not be vested, so vested in Glendale. So I have thought about this, and that is why I suggested adding the language about demonstrating civic participation in community activities. That shows that that business owner has already demonstrated an interest in what occurs in Glendale. And I think that's as important as them having continuous operation in Glendale. So I would ask that this council approve the motion as stated, the amendment as stated.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Nay.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm gonna explain my vote. I think anytime somebody has a business interest, property, their livelihood, and they're still willing to go far above just being a business owner and taking, when they're willing to give back, I don't know why we wouldn't want to take advantage of that. I mean, in my opinion, as Councilmember said, we should be able to find enough people, we should be able to find enough people to work for the city of Glendale that live in Glendale. But we don't.
Mm-huh.
We've got some incredible people that live in other cities that choose to work in Glendale. I think that we should need to take full advantage of that. And if a business owner's got a business that's successful, he's licensed, she's licensed, they turn around and want to continue on and be more part of a Glendale, I think that just makes us a better city, and I am in full support. I do vote aye. The motion does carry. Council comments and suggestions? Councilmember Clark?
No, 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 no. Point of order, Mayor. I need you to...
Oh, we gotta do the other side. Yeah, that's why I like getting these done before we... Okay, so now we're gonna go to the original one as amended. Okay. Everybody got that? Okay, so with that said, we also already have the motion in second by Tomachoff. Roll call vote again. Councilmember Clark, as amended, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnar, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Though I was opposed to the amendment, I do think that the uniform bylaws are important and will be helpful to all of our commissions. I will say that the logic that was expressed supporting the amendment, taken one step farther, would say that we don't need to have residents on the city council, that they could be business people as well. I don't think that that's something we'd want to do in our committee, and with that, I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion does carry. Council comments and suggestions? Councilmember Clark, have you any?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Aldama. He had a wonderful picnic, fishing day for everybody at Bonzel Park, and everybody had a great time. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Malnar?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Yes, Mayor, just another reminder for Choya residents and staff, we're having the first annual Choya barbecue on May 12th at Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center at 5:30. We're gonna have barbecue, ribs and chicken on site, cornhole. Some of the games are coming in, outdoor games, swing toss and other things. So hopefully you'll be able to join us for a fun district barbecue on May 12th, 5:30. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, Mayor, one thing. I just wanted to take a moment to compliment Councilmember Malnar on the hard work and dedication that he's put into a particular neighborhood in his district, Granada Estates. That neighborhood's had a tough time for a lot of years and has probably, I think fairly could be said, given short shrift in the past. But during his time on this council, he has poured plenty of effort into that neighborhood. He's been very approachable, he's reached out, he's been innovative, and the neighborhood has improved. Now, there may still be more work to be done, and maybe not everything's gone right, but it's not to the blame of Councilmember Malnar. He's been doing a terrific job up there, and I just wanted to say so on the record. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank Councilmember Hugh and Councilmember Clark for attending the sixth annual Hook a Kid on Fishing event. We hooked quite a bit of kids on fishing this past weekend. I want to thank all of our staff for helping me put that event together. It was great. My family helped out. Everybody helped out. Police, fire, we gave out food and plenty of giveaways. We had, one of the largest fish that was caught was 16 and a half pounds. It was quite a, quite large catfish. However, we gave away fishing poles and prizes to kids who brought us the smallest fish, and that's how we did our giveaway. So it was really fun, but I wanted to thank the council members and thank everybody involved. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I was just looking at my calendar, and Adam, it's not on my calendar, but May 6th is the date, right? What'd I thought? 7?
7 p.m.
7 p.m., okay. So May 6th, we have for, this will be our fourth time doing this. We had two years that we weren't able to hold it, but a military induction ceremony. And if you haven't heard of it, these young kids that make the decision to serve our country right out of high school, we hold a special ceremony. We're looking at nearly 200 young people, young men, young women, that are going into the military in all the branches of service. At Calvary Church at 7:00 p.m., 59th Avenue and Bell Road will be holding a special ceremony where we'll give them challenge coins. We give them stalls, stalls with, hang with, around their neck that have the branch of service that they're gonna be enlisting in. We give them certificates from my office, let them take photos, and then once they've all walked across the stage, had their names announced and the branch of service they're going into, we have a retired four-star general, Robin Rand, which was actually a Luke commander years ago, and ended up commanding the European Theater as a four-star. He's flying in from him, his home back east to come down here specifically to swear these young folks in. Very, very excited about that. I'm not asking you folks to come out because, quite honestly, we're gonna have a packed house. If you want to come out, we have some overflow rooms, you're welcome, but we certainly want the young people and their families, their siblings, their moms and dads, grandmas, to have that first opportunity to watch them walk across the stage. So the main thing is we want to honor these people that are gonna be defending America's freedoms. And so I hope that even if you're not able to make it, that you can send your well wishes to these young people. I'm very, very proud of them, and these aren't just Glendale students, these are students from across the valley. Two years ago, we were supposed to have an event that would have had well over 400 students. And with the COVID-19, that kind of pushed us backwards, but I think it's really something to be proud of. As you look around, the veterans that are there that have already served and watch their faces as these young folks walk across the stage, it's really, really quite, quite moving. So with that said, next on our agenda are the citizens' comments. Our council makes this opportunity available to citizens to bring information business before the council that is not on the print agenda. Now, before we start welcoming speakers to the podium, I want to remind everyone in the audience and anyone speaking tonight, this is a public meeting, and as the chair will not tolerate any profanity, aggression, or threats to the council or staff. If you violate the rules, we're simply not gonna warn you, we're just gonna escort you out of the building. I would ask that you come up, and I'll announce who's gonna be the first speaker and who's gonna follow them. Please be ready to come up so we can make this quick. Mr. Dibler, you're up first, and after Mr. Dibler, Lynn Bulmer. Bulmer, I sure hope I pronounced that correctly.
Bulmer.
Bulmer, okay. So you'll have three minutes to speak. I don't need your address, I just need to know what district you live in, if you know it. If not, just give us your main credentials. James, go ahead. You got three minutes.
Hi, my name is James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. Today, I am speaking to you regarding one employment concerns. I would like the city of Glendale to partner with Glendale Community College to provide internship for that adopted recognition program. It will bring more job experience to GCC students with developmental disability working at the bowling alley or adopted bowling. This will solve the problem of not having workers in the city of Glendale with the park and recognition program. Finally, I would like Glendale Mayor Joey Waters to wear a Phoenix Suns jersey at the Glendale City Council meeting. This will make Phoenix Suns broadcaster, I'm McCoy, happy with his birthday celebration. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this one matter.
Thank you, James. Lynn, if you could make your way up here. And again, I'll ask again, Joyce Capson, you'll be following her, if you could be ready to speak when they're finished speaking, that would really help us out. Thank you. Joyce, you're after Lynn.
Hi, I hate public speaking. My name's Lynn Bulmer. I'm from Granada Estates East, and I have been blessed by Glendale. I have a home that was put in by city revitalization 26 years ago. I've been there. It was a beautiful neighborhood. Since then, the west side of Granada has been, was horrible, I heard. I had no idea about drugs, scrapping, anything like that that goes on. It's moved over to my side, and I know you've put a lot of effort in. But I read something on Nextdoor, really bothered me, and I just wanted to share that. It said, "The entire trailhead of homes needs to be mowed down and replaced with new affordable housing for the area and a new well-maintained playground and park. That neighborhood is a crime magnet, generates more calls for Glendale PD than any other. The neighborhood is full of old poorly maintained trailer homes with poorly cared four yards. Lots of drug deals, dealers, the place isn't safe for kids to play. Sorry, it's a sad truth." Wouldn't it be nice if Glendale put that kind of energy into neighborhoods that do sports venues? That was, I got so angry when I read that, because I know this is a, this is, didn't happen overnight. It's not gonna go away. And I just implore, keep up the good work. The cops were on my block the other day, like, almost like a SWAT team from a neighbor who's being stole from drugs, is still high. As you know, the homeless are horrendous. And I've been approaching the neighbors that there's issues with. What can we do to help? Just put it out there, let us know. And thank you for all you do. And I've been blessed to live in Glendale.
Thank you very much. Okay, Joyce, you're up, and then James Greasley?
Greasley.
Okay, if you could make your way close to the front, so you'll be ready to speak, sir.
Well, guys, if I look like I just got out of bed, I did. I, as you all know, I'm very ill, but I'm here today again...
Okay, ma'am, I need you to state your name and the district that you live in.
My name is Joyce Capson. I live in Granada Estates.
Perfect.
Ray Malnar's district. I don't know if everybody got it, but my Easter present was a text message from a neighbor with an article, a news article. This one Glendale neighborhood is just infested with code violations. Well, yeah, it is. And I will tell you, back in 2018, and I want to thank him again today, even though he's not with Glendale any longer, Officer Chuck Buffington came in, took over the cat team, and he cleaned house. He did. He did an amazing job. And then a little problem occurred. He was doing the front yard parking tickets as well, and then he got his hands smacked for it, and that was taken away. Oh, that's code. Only code can do that. But code wouldn't do it. So now we're hearing that code wants four more officers. Okay? My issue with that is what good is this gonna do when they come up with the same training? All these new codes that were put into place, my favorite, inoperable vehicle not being enforced. I have photographed after photograph, you can see the plates from the street, but because Tim Bowling, I think, has that thing, that little tag going on still, there's a problem. There's cars piling up in front yards all over my neighborhood, and they won't enforce it. And I pull up the public records to back everything up, why they're closing it. Well, the judge won't let this go through court, and what is he, hook line and sinker? He's gonna make up the mind of everybody while he's out there? No. You can see the plates from the street, it says 2016 on it. Enforce it. I don't understand the issue. And I want to thank Warren Wilfong as well, and Councilmember Malnar, who did the code review committee, and Ms. Clark, for you, if you're sitting on it, Mr. Turner, the same way. And I think we all put a lot of work into that, and I'm asking myself, where did we go? And we're not getting any answers from anybody downtown. I'm not asking them to do anything that isn't on the book, I'm just saying, please enforce the current codes. And nobody will say why they're not. So I was hoping, Councilmember Malnar, maybe you could shoot me an email this week or a phone call and kind of give me some insight. I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because I don't want to get any more text messages for Easter that say how filthy Because I don't want to get any more text messages for Easter that say how filthy my neighborhood is.
Thank you.
You guys have a blessed day.
Mr. Greeley? Where'd he go? Oh. Okay. Mr. Wilfong, you're following him. If you could be ready to go, I'd appreciate it.
I live at Granada Estates, and my problem is that it seems like nothing seems to get done. Code doesn't do their job. There's weeds out there two feet tall, and it just seems like nothing. They can drive by them, but they can't see them. I don't know why. And I feel like a broken record because this is what I keep saying all the time. We got to get rid of some of those weeds and stuff. I don't want to live in a junkyard. I don't want to live, I want to live out there where my friends and stuff can come and see me and not live in a mess. But I don't know what it takes to get done what needs to be done. I guess I don't know the answer, excepting, maybe if they would go out and give some of these people a ticket, and the neighborhood would find out that they got a ticket, maybe they would be a little bit more careful about their own yards themselves. My brother used to live out there just anymore, but the lady next door to him, evidently years ago, a few years ago, she must have got warned about her front yard, but she told my brother, she says, "I got to keep my yard up because they told me if I don't, I'm going to get a ticket." Well, that went my home. And so, she keeps her yard up nice and clean. But somewhere, somehow, the people have to learn that they have to take care of their front yards so we don't have to live in a mess out there. Granada could be a nice place to live if people would have respect for their neighbors and stuff like that. So, all I'm asking is, code, when they drive down the street, this one on the corner here that weeds is about that tall in that yard. They've been that way for two, three weeks, and nobody ever does anything about it. So, that's my problem. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilfong?
Can you pass me something? Sorry for intruding with paper, but Warren Wilfong, Alcatillo District. I'm going to give you a little insight how this department works. Let me throw this back over here, and you can see it. This is a property that we've been complaining about for years, years. This is a violation from the old code and the new code. This property has a 40% allowable parking space. As I read in the last one, Tim Bowling, the code compliance officer, confirmed that the circle driveway is allowed. He allowed it underneath the new code that only allows 40%. So, let me put this in perspective. The circle driveway is 34% of the drive, of the front yard. The main driveway and artillery driveway is 33.5%. It is almost 70%. The total square footage is 1,742. If you take that square right there, that's their parking. The large square is their parking. The other part is their landscaping. That shows you how much parking they have, and they allowed this violation. And they continue to allow it because it's still going on. And they'll come to you and try to change the code of the 40 and the 50% rule because they're trying to make these things work. And all they're doing is creating the hardship. They are creating the hardship by not enforcing the code. They will not do this because they choose not to. It's clear as that. And residents and council members have spent hours fighting staff on this, and it doesn't get anything done. So, I'm asking this council to get together and make staff do their job. We are done. I will come to every council meeting and show what's going on. We have had enough of this. You see them? They should be staying home, relaxing, but they can't because they live in a Granada Estates, and I've been there, and I agree with you, Councilmember Melnar. You are doing some work, but there is so much more that has to be done. It's ridiculous. And it is. And I actually went over there and put complaints in. And you know how I got the result done? I put in the complaint saying that I'm copying Councilmember Melnar on his complaint, and it got done. So, I had to threaten staff to tell him he's part of the complaint. He's getting it. I can't make it any clearer. They choose not to enforce. It's a violation for nine months now. Thank you.
Thank you. To be in no further business before the council, and I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. There's no objection from the council. Or adjourn.